...leading into order and ask if you can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States and America and to the Republic of West hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and let me just get to the agenda. Okay, and are there any board committee reports? Okay, Cheryl.
The Education and Technology Committee met this evening. We heard about plans for technology pending budgets for 2021-22 school year. We heard about plans for this spring and summer for faculty and professional development, which sound really great around, you know, teaching with technology, assessing with technology, differentiation, using with technology when you're working in more online learning environments. We talked about testing and assessment as the year continues on and plans for that. And so I believe we will be hearing a pretty thorough report from our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction on some of updates with the learning and technology later in this meeting. Anything that you want to add, Judah?
I think, I think. I think you covered it very well. We heard some stuff about the technology that we've been doing to, to move forward as well as some of the plans for, you know, getting the education curriculum moving forward as well. So, thank you.
I just wanted to add something. I wanted to ditto Cheryl's sentiments and I thought that the... What was that? Oh, hold on. Sorry about that, everyone. I wanted to ditto Cheryl's sentiments. I thought the meeting was absolutely amazing and I just wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Scott Winn and also Bill Blum. There's so many exciting things that are in store for our students and I can't wait to move forward and to hear the continued ideas. So things are moving forward in the right direction, so hold tight. Things are definitely going to get better.
All right, any other board committee reports? In that case, seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Goss.
Thank you. This will be very short and sweet. We have... This will be, again, short and sweet. We have, Lisa's going to lead us with a report on the budget in just a moment. While she's getting that up on the screen, I'll just mention a couple of things. First of all, I'm very pleased and proud of our entire staff for all that they've done to pull together to have our students return to, for four days of instruction per week, beginning Monday, April 12th. The preparation that has gone into making this reality has been immense. All of the preparation in terms of new procedures, rearrangement of furniture, purchasing and installation of polycarbonate barriers, you name it. It's all been going on behind the scenes. Everybody's working incredibly hard and doing such a great job making it happen. So we are ready and we're excited to have our students back for more in-person instruction starting Monday. Also excited today that an email went out about strategic planning. That's going to ramp up beginning April 30th. It's going to continue right through January. And so an invitation went out today in an email to invite our community and our staff to participate in that process. Tomorrow, a very similar invitation will be going out to, for a task force that will begin working on diversity, equity, and inclusion here in the district to make some specific recommendations based on the state frameworks. And so this invitation will be going out tomorrow, so watch for that. And lastly, I want to just mention that surveillance testing planning is, has been incredible. It's been such our nurses and Dr. Ursso have done an amazing job, along with many others who've come alongside to help. But to, to get a surveillance testing program in place that will start shortly after students return is going to be, is, is a big undertaking. And that's progressing very, very well. We still don't have the test kits in hand. When the test kits are in hand and all of our procedures are up and running, we will, we'll be ready to move forward with that. And having said that, I would just like to make an appeal to our families to, you know, please consider strongly providing consent for your children to participate. Right now, we're at about 25%, and that's not where we'd like it to be. We'd like at least half of our families and students to participate in this because it makes the results, you know, that much more reliable and valid. So I think if you can, perhaps a lot of families were on vacation and really didn't, didn't look at the, at that. And so I've sent it out again and I hope many will take advantage of that. And a reminder that vaccines, starting today or tomorrow, right, right about now, are available to anyone 16 and older. That is the Pfizer vaccine, which is primarily obtained at the county center. So if you can go online, it'll tell you which vaccine. I think it's 18 and up for the Moderna, 16 and up for Pfizer. If you can go in there and, and, you know, get that done, that's, that's a plus. And we'll just, hopefully that age keeps lowering as it's safely available for more people. With that, I'd like to talk a little bit about budget. Let me have Lisa kick that up for us. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so our revenue, so literally as a few minutes ago, this is, this slide has been changed. But let's go over with where we are right now. So the real property body of $77.9 million, that's from the tax cap calculation on the previous slide. Our county sales tax is holding at $1.6 million. The highlighted number, numbers are, are subject to change. So our non-resident tuition, right now it's at 1.9. That may be adjusted upwards to 2 million. We're, we're not sure yet, but just wanted to highlight that that can possibly change. Health services of $200,000. Interest and earnings, $20,000. That's a big decrease from this year's budget. Obviously, interest rates are very low right now, but that could potentially start to move. But as a, you know, as of now, we're going to leave that at $20,000. Rentals of real property of our facilities, $40,000. Refunded prior year VOSI expenses, $90,000. Miscellaneous revenue of $160,000. And our state and federal aid, as of the last state aid run was $8.4 million. I just received new state aid runs. The number is significantly different, but I'm going to have to spend some time studying it and, but it is good news. So that's, on the surface, it looks like it's very good news.
Yeah. Sounds like, you know, half. That's an increase. We're excited about that.
So that will be, this slide will be adjusted in the next presentation. Okay, so our proposed new FTE expenditures, there was a request to put some money into some of these proposals. So as of, as of now, these are some of the new FTEs that we're proposing to put into the budget. 2.0 elementary school counselors for $217,000 approximately. One E&amp;L teacher split between Anne Hutch and Breeville for $109,000. One social worker for $612, $109,000. One AIS teaching assistant at Waverly, $54,000. One district-wide maintenance mechanic, electrician, $108,000. .5 computer aid for district-wide, $58,000. Five stipends for technology integration specialists, $63,000. Two permanent monitor subs at Waverly and Anne Hutch, $62,000. And an increase of .1 band at the middle school for $65,000.
Judah, did you have a question?
The numbers you were calling up didn't match the numbers on my screen. But now all of a sudden they do.
Okay.
I was, I was listening to you and I'm looking at the numbers. They were different. And then all of a sudden, I look back and now they're the same. I don't know. Believe me, the second I raised my hand, I was talking about the numbers.
So that totals $786,500. Other proposed expenditures, Chromebooks, desktops, licenses, approximately $650,000. Door access upgrades at the elementary schools, $125,000. Various facilities repairs, bathrooms, floor tile renovations, $200,000. Three additional modified sports teams, not specific at this moment, but there. Tom Lehman has increased, has noticed increased enrollment, whether it's going to be in soccer or track or whatever the case may be. He's estimating he may need three more modified teams for next year. So that's $23,000. New safety netting on the turf, $21,000. And five additional occupational education spots for $87,000 for $1.106 million. And I have here that this, these items were to be funded with excess fund balance unless foundation aid increases significantly, which it appears to have been. So it's a discussion we can continue to have regarding using fund balance or, you know, if we want to offset some of these costs, you know, through the foundation aid.
Question. On Chromebooks, how many Chromebooks is that? Do we have a rough number?
I have a total rough number for you. It's small group instruction for every classroom at elementary level. A grade five, supporting a whole Chromebook card of 30, each Chromebook card for a grade level. And then a one-to-one in the sixth grade, which is a doubt. I'm going to call it 275.
So we're going to provide a Chromebook to every kid in the school?
No. Sixth grade one-to-one, small group instruction, let's say five to six Chromebooks in each classroom, supported by a grade level card. And then seven, two to twelve would be BYOD with the Chromebooks and the devices that we currently have, longed out.
The ones that we're assigning to kids, we, we get responsibility for them if they lose them, break them?
We have a liability waiver. And we also provide insurance.
That's not a waiver, that's the fact that they have to replace it. Correct?
Sorry.
If, if you give a Chromebook to a kid, the kid takes it home, loses it, breaks it, drops it, puts it in a washing machine, they have to replace it?
We have a liability waiver that has a repair clause and a replacement clause that's associated with that. We also have insurance policies that parents can sign up for that $35 they can protect the device for replacement and repair.
The reason I asked the question is for accountability, okay? If you give someone something and they have no accountability for it, they break it, lose it, drop it, throw it away, and we're just going to keep replacing them, what are we teaching the kids? That's my, that's the reason I asked the question. It's not about money. I understand we have insurance.
Yes, so, so we have...
What are we teaching a kid?
They're responsible. It's like a lost book thing, right? If a student loses a textbook, they have to pay for it.
So they, they will be...
There is. We currently do.
He, he kind of borrows a device, signs off on a liability. I just want to make it, that's all. If you listen to Bill carefully, I understand what Bill says.
Behind the mask, I really didn't hear what he said.
It's not, it's not a release. A waiver is not a release. It's a, it's a signature that says you're responsible.
Right. It's not a, I think it's...
It's not a release, it's a waiver.
I heard a waiver.
No, I know. I heard the safety initiative also, but I explained it. It's the opposite. I, I just want to count those. That's all. Oh, Lisa, the new safety money on the turf, is that additional, what we have, or are they replaced?
It's replacement.
You're right.
It's in bad shape.
Okay, our proposed capital projects, that hasn't changed, $2.4 million for the partial work replacement at the middle school. Renovation of middle school gyms, including ceiling lights, added ventilation in the small gym. Should any funding be left over, it would go to other projects as identified on the capital plan. And again, we're, we plan to use approximately $298,000 from reserve funds to offset. So looking forward, while still waiting New York State budget, that was due. Hopefully that, I'll see something, you know. I'm assuming the union wouldn't have sent anything to me if it wasn't voted on, so I'm assuming that's done. We will finalize the budget and continue planning for reopening in September. On April 20th is the board adoption of the budget. May 11th is the budget hearing. The budget vote is May 18th from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And everyone must go to the Eastchester Middle School Gym this year. As a reminder, there is no bar through polling location this year, so please be sure to come to the middle school if you wish to vote. So, and I guess at this point, any other questions? Cheryl?
I believe that, you know, in the last federal bill, there is quite a bit of the money that is going to schools is earmarked for what they are calling learning loss. I think something like 20%. And when I think of that, I, I think of our most at-risk students, including, say, English language learners and special education students. And there is an item in the budget specific to English language learners that E&amp;L teacher at the elementary level. I'm still wondering about what kinds of supports or services might be in place for special education students who may have had deficits in, in services or have other needs either this summer or going into next year. Because I know there's nothing specific in the budget for this population, but I just wanted to flag that because it stands out to me, given everything that's been going on with schools being in remote and hybrid for over a year.
So just to, you know, touch base on that, we are still awaiting guidance on some of these federal, you know, monies. Based on some of the things I read today, there may be a requirement that the allocation be spread over several years, that you may not be able to use it all in one year. My understanding is also that there is a lot of, or there's some potential IDA money, which is specifically targeted toward special education. So I think, you know, the intention is to, especially with special education, is to utilize those funds to provide additional support. I don't know if Maureen has any issue wants to add. I don't want to throw her on the spot, but.
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's what I had read as well. I've been waiting. See, I, I heard that there might be a 20% increase in allocation for IDA money. So, you know, that definitely would be something that would be mandated by federal law to vote as students with special needs. Also, we are still running a special needs summer school program and we really are opening that up and being a little bit more convenient with the programming that we're doing to include students who have had some, some gap because of the pandemic. Most of our students have really actually done really well. We've gone through many meetings already. Students are meeting goals and really progressing nicely, partly because, you know, they have been in for, you know, at least the four days, most of the students. But we still are working on making sure that we have programs in place over the summer to make sure we fill the gaps and that progression for the fall. And looking at any of the monies that would be helpful for next year as well.
Sorry. Thank you. I just want, yeah, thank you for that, Maureen. You know, it's a concern I have because I think that some of the deficits and losses might not be visible or, you know, they're not, they're also, it could be that they are not as, they're not typical because it's been such an atypical year. And so I think there's a lot of compelling literature that this population, we have to make sure that we're especially focused on, on this population during this, this transition back to fuller, fuller instruction. So, and maybe like the summer school options could be, there could be a more nuanced, and I'm sure you're taking this like the nuanced, more nuanced approach to the, the kinds of opportunities that are available for different types of learners. Thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
The numbers that you did present, those are basically the same numbers you presented at the last meeting? Has, has anything changed significantly or?
No, I, there is some, I, I think I had on the slide last time, some various, some article adjustments. That's, we're still kind of working through that. That may be included, but I think all of these items here were on the prior presentation.
And the revenues were the same? We didn't include any of the revenues we're owed?
No, the revenues are the same as they were. But that will change now.
So my, my real question becomes if we get a new influx of revenue, are we going to sit down and discuss what we're going to do with it? Or do we have a plan yet that?
So...
What would, if we get that $300,000, we had the nice meeting in front of the school, about $350,000 or so?
Well, you're talking, is that federal money you're talking about, the $300,000? Okay, so federal, I haven't taken into this budget any federal funding at this point because I, I'm still waiting for...
We don't have it. Right, I get it.
I don't want to camp on it. I don't want to hire people.
I get that.
Not knowing we have it. So federal money is completely to the side at the moment. The proposed other expenditures of the $1.1 million, my intention was to use excess fund balance to pay for that. But if we do get additional foundation aid, I wouldn't take it from fund balance and I would reallocate any excess fund balance to some reserves that we, our tax security reserve is very low at this point, needs to be replenished. Our federal reserve or for post-retirement benefits, that needs to be replenished. So this, the, any additional funding from the state will allow us to not have to utilize our fund balance to pay for some of these.
You answered my question perfectly because that's absolutely what I wanted to hear. So, thank you.
I just, I just had a comment, maybe an observation. You know, the year before I joined the board was the infamous Red Shirk meeting, maybe it was two years before, where the tax cap came and took away modified sports, took away some psychologists and counseling at the elementary level. And here we are almost 10 years later, looking at, you know, a budget where we're putting modified sports back in, free sports. We're putting, you know, psychology and counseling at the elementary level back in. So that, to me, is a great, kudos to this team for, you know. It took a while and obviously we, you know, even under the tax cap, it's ready to see that we're bringing back the things, you know. And when I came on the board, the first thing I said is, once the program goes away, it never comes back. And this is, we're bringing things back. So that's all I'm saying. And I'm not usually one to be a big sports advocate, but, you know, it's part of the picture, so I appreciate it.
Actually, I actually got a comment on Judah's comment. We never eliminated modified sports.
Reduced it.
We, we reduced some double teams to single teams and stuff like that. And I don't see specifics yet of what we're adding here. So we might be adding back a second team in some areas. We might be adding a team in an area we never had before or something like that. But it's, it's not like we're putting modified back that we had taken away at one point. We really, never really took it away. We just kind of adjusted a couple of them.
Stop the air.
I'm sorry, Judith. Yeah, but I, I get it and you get it, but I, you know, I'm asking the question for the people who might be listening to us, you know? So. And notice I said "might be" listening to us.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone want to add something?
Thank you. Next to Mr. Winn is really going to talk to us a little bit about 30,000-foot view of where we're headed with some of our planning post-COVID. And this is some exciting stuff. Take it away.
Excellent. Thank you. Evening, everyone. So like Rob said, just wanted to take you through some, some general ideas of... All right, here we go. In terms of this post-COVID, COVID planning. So I came across this quote and I thought it was very relevant in terms of the key to overcome a crisis is patience, courage, self-discipline, adaptation, and alertness. And I think I related to this quote for, for a lot of reasons. One being the fact that we have to remember that this, this crisis lasted a very long time and is not going to be solved overnight. We have a lot of students who have experienced a lot of different things over their time, whether they be academic, whether they be social, emotional. And there's a lot of pieces that goes into this. We've had students who have switched learning locations multiple times. We've had students who have been in school, who have been home, who have been all over the place, have had very different experiences. We've had students who have had positive experiences through remote instruction, some who have had some very negative experiences. I, I just want to say that I think overall, there's a lot that's going to go into the return to, and I hate using this word, but I keep putting it in, in air quotes, but "normal" instruction. And I think as we begin to look at this, there's going to be many stages that, that's going to take us in order to really truly understand the ramifications of all that's happened. So with that being said, I'm going to take you through a, a general overview of, of some of the thoughts around what, what has taken place. We're going to look at some data analysis pieces. What are the pieces of data that we're been, we're looking at currently and will be looking at in the future, and some of the steps that we're taking to move us forward as a district. So in terms of an overview, really the biggest question has been, what are our concerns? What are we concerned about with students as they begin to come back and as we begin to prepare for next school year? So obviously, this idea of learning loss, and I put "learning loss" in quotations because it, it's really a loaded buzzword at this point, and we need to be very careful about how we use that idea of learning loss. All of our students have been engaged in serious and significant learning throughout this year. Okay? So I, I want to make sure that we're not under the impression that our students are, that the vast majority are regressing, that have not been instructed. You know, we've had some, some amazing experiences educationally that have taken place over the course of the pandemic. And I want to make sure that we realize that while, yes, it hasn't been the norm, but we have had amazing instruction taking place. We also need to realize that there are significant differences in some of the issues that exist at all of the different levels. The, the, the issues that may exist at the primary, at our elementary level, at our secondary level, are all extremely unique. And I want to accredit our, our teachers at each of those levels of the conversations that they've been having have been very... that they've been having have been very, very targeted and very specific to the needs of the students at those levels. Especially also our targeted groups. And Cheryl, you brought up some of our targeted groups in your, in your question. Not only our students with special needs, but our students that receive AIS services, our ENL students. These are all critical groups that face very unique challenges. You had brought up our ENL students, and I had a great conversation with one of our ENL teachers today who reminded me that many of our ENL students in a normal school year are immersed in a culture where they're hearing the English language throughout the school day and learn greatly from that experience of immersion. They haven't had that. And how do we begin to develop more and really address some of those social communication skills? So that's something that we're looking into as one of those kind of targeted needs of a, of a particular group. Obviously, we're, we're looking at and considering the overall preparedness for the next grade level. What are, are there any areas as students are moving from one grade level to the next that we have either kind of put to the side and consciously acknowledged that we weren't going to cover? Or are there areas that we have, you know, kind of felt that students did not progress to the same level that we wanted to from previous years? And those conversations are very, very important. And they have been taking place honestly since the start of the pandemic. And teachers have been very, very good about communicating between grade levels about what should be expected of the next year's teacher in terms of those skills. I, I keep coming back to this idea of this, this is going to be a marathon, not a sprint, that we are going to really and truly, in a, in a conversation I've been having with the other assistant superintendents in the region, is that we're realizing that this is a multi-year adventure that we're on in order to make sure that we are taking our time and really looking at each and every individual student to make sure that their needs are being met. And that will take some time in order for us to do that. But luckily, I would say that the general belief is that our primary students have probably been the group that have suffered the most. And we have a lot of time with them, which is the great thing, is that we can use that time in order to really and truly figure out what it is that they need. The other thing that, you know, we've, we've been talking about throughout the district is this idea of benchmarking, benchmarking versus comparison. And I think we need to be very careful. I've heard a lot of people say things like, well, how are our kids doing as opposed to Scarsdale? How are our kids doing as opposed to Byram Hills? I think we need to be very careful because every school district has had different circumstances. And before we jump into strict comparisons, I would rather that us look at and benchmark our students against our own students from previous years. How have our students been doing relative to what has happened at that grade level in the past? Are our students at the same level? Are they, do they have the same skills leaving sixth grade, going into seventh grade that other students have had in the past? I don't want us to necessarily not look at comparisons because that data is important also, but I do want us to be cautious based upon the major differences that have existed within the region in terms of schooling, in terms of resources, in terms of all the different pieces, that we don't make assumptions based upon that just because of certain things that may come out as we look at all of the data. Really what I want us to do is begin to take the outlook of a, a solution-oriented kind of philosophy. You know, this whole idea, obviously we are facing a problem that we need to look at. But we want to stay out of this, this context of really focusing on the issue and the challenge and what has happened in the past and move into the next phase, which is how can we grow from this? How can we use the information that we have in order to move us forward? A lot of good things have actually happened. A lot of growth has taken place as a district. We've learned tremendous amounts. And how do we really take that and move us forward as a district using that while also making sure that we look at any deficiencies that may have developed along the way as well? So in terms of data, the question is, so what do we know? And we're not going to get into a lot of the specifics right now. I'm going to be coming back to you in either late May or early June to lay out some of the more specifics around the data. But I wanted to give a, a general sense of some of the things that we are really digging into and looking at. And I broke them down into three major categories, the first being obviously assessments. And these are some, this is some great data that we have within our systems on all of our students. And we've got things like the STAR assessment, looking at reading levels of our students. We have DRAs at the elementary school. We have the F and P assessments, the Fontes and Pennell assessments, to be able to look at some of our students at a deeper level who have been struggling within our AIS program. We do have New York State assessment data. Some of our students will be taking that and will be using that as we always do, as another data point to potentially look at what, what that is going to tell us. And we are going to be transitioning to another set of, of data points, which is the NWEA MAPS testing. This is a spectacular program used by many, many of our, our fellow districts. And that will give us both ELA and math data that will be able to tell us some, some targeted information on our students. We're going to be using that as a universal screener, at least K5. I'm looking at potentially going as far as K8 with that, with the possibility of even moving forward with 912 farther into the future. But this will be a, another data point that will be very, very helpful for us and will give us instructional information as well. From a programmatic standpoint, obviously all of our assessments and all of our programs have assessments. So our Wonders program, our Go Math program, we've been looking at our AIS enrollments very, very carefully in order to determine what kind of levels our students are progressing at. We're looking at our ENL progress reports. That's where some of that information came from in terms of social communication and looking at the specifics related around that. But to me, the most important data that we have is our teacher input. Our teachers have been with these students. They have worked with them. They know intimately exactly what it is our students need and how they're going to help move them forward. Classroom performance is a critical piece, and we are setting up vertical articulation meetings where teachers can meet between grade levels to have these in-depth conversations about students in order to make sure that that data and information is passed from one grade level to the next. They can talk about it from a curricular standpoint. They can talk, talk about it from a student standpoint. And that is truly where we're going to begin that conversation as we begin the next school year. Obviously, this process is a, is a continuous process. Analysis and discussion around data is something that needs to happen all the time. We're always looking at this question of how do we best meet the needs of our students? We've been doing this since the start of the pandemic. Teachers have been meeting at both at school levels, at grade levels, at student levels to really talk about what the needs are. Our grade levels, our teams, our departments are all engaged in these conversations. And the ultimate goal here is to make sure that we have data on every student for teachers to be informed as we begin next school year. We want to make sure that going into next school year, we have a plan in place that's going to address all of these needs. We're going to be doing a lot of work over the summer, which we'll talk about in a second. But this is really and truly the point. We want to make sure that we have this plan in place, ready to go, so that our teachers can hit the ground running on that first day of school next year and make sure that we are addressing the needs of all of our students. So what does this look like? Where are we headed? So here we have just a little bit of a timeline to look at what this is going to look like over the course of the next several months. So for April, May, and June, obviously instruction is going to continue. We're so excited to have a, a larger number of our students back in the classrooms, starting on Monday of next week. We're going to continue with instruction of the highest level that we can. We're going to continue with assessments. We're going to continue collecting data. We're going to continue looking at that data and providing opportunities for our teachers to collaborate with one another, to share that information, to really dig in and look at where we are in terms of progress. Over the summer, we have a number of different things that are going to be taking place. Obviously, we'll be offering our high school summer school once again. We are in the process of looking at some different summer programs that we want to be able to offer. One of them is definitely going to be a K5 program for our AIS students, our students at the elementary level that have been struggling and have been identified as having needs. We want to dig into that. We are looking at providing some kind of summer slide support to all students. We're, we're still in development, still looking at what that really truly looks like. But we want to be able to provide parents and students of, at every grade level, all subject areas, we want to be able to provide something so that they can continue that work over the summer. Obviously, the best thing that you can do with your child is have them read or read with them. That is paramount. But we are looking at some, some more content-specific items that we can provide. Over the summer, we're also going to be doing a lot of curriculum development work. We're planning on having some curriculum development bootcamps with our teachers where we're bringing groups of teachers together to really analyze the curriculum, to dig in and to say, what is it that we need in order to provide the best possible education come, come the fall? In September, welcome back. We're hoping, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll be able to bring back all of our children and to, and have them back in the classrooms full-time, which would be amazing. We're going to be looking at assessment of those students. I am not necessarily a proponent of assessment that first couple of days of school. I want kids to get back into school and especially those that have been out and, and hybrid and remote for so long. We want to get them back into the swing of things, but early on, be able to assess them again, to jump in and provide some good data and then adjust the curriculum as needed. What are some of those things that need to be adjusted along the way? Throughout the fall, one of the initiatives that we've decided is going to be kind of taking a lot of our attention is the idea of RTI MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports. And a big part of that is looking at tier-one interventions. Those are interventions that take place in the classroom. They're not pull-out services. These are general ed teachers assessing and providing supports at a high level within the classroom. And in order to do that, we need to provide professional development around that. So that's going to be one of the focuses of our professional development program, both this summer and into next school year. So we'll be looking at providing a lot of those interventions and support to our teachers around those interventions. Obviously, we're going to continue to monitor and respond to needs as they arise. Like I said, not a sprint. This is a marathon. So we have to keep coming back, looking at the data, looking at what the needs are, and adjusting as we, as we move along. And of course, as we move through the fall and into 2022, ensuring that our gaps are being reduced based upon the data we have, based upon our teacher feedback, based upon what we're seeing happening in the classrooms, looking at, looking at our report card grades, looking at all that data that we can possibly gather. So as you can see, this is, this is a process. It's something that we're going to continue to look at as we move through and hopefully be able to make sure that, you know, throughout the school year, for the remainder of this year, through the summer, and into next year, that we're addressing as many needs as we possibly can. And that's kind of where we are at this point. So I have any questions?
So can you just go back one slide to the timeline again?
Yeah.
So, so I just want to make sure that we're not setting up both our teachers and students to fail in terms of expecting more intervention for them in a, in a period of time when we are bringing kids back that we know are going to have deficiencies. And just in the analysis part of it, let alone the intervention part of it, I think is going to be a big job, plus getting them back up to speed to some extent, which is the intervention. It just, I, I just want to make sure we're not overburdening at, you know, the, the teachers, which then sets our students up to fail. So I, I love the timeline. I love the concept that this is a marathon and not a sprint. I think is absolutely accurate. I mean, just like we talked about with the money is going to be required to be spent over years because there's a clear recognition that you're not going to solve all of these problems in one year or, you know, or immediately. And so I just want to make sure even in the expectations that we're setting up for our teachers with the interventions, that we're not setting it up that way as well.
I agree. And I think a lot of that comes in with messaging and support of teachers and making sure that they understand that this is a long-term process, that small gains is where the goal is, that we're not looking, that the district is not expecting major jumps, that we're not expecting to see students, you know, who have a, a gap in a certain area to completely overcome that gap in a very short period of time. And I think that the messaging needs to be very clear about that. So I appreciate that.
I mean, it'd be great if we can get it. Don't get me wrong.
Oh, listen.
I think high expectations, high expectations are great and we should have them, but I think they need to also be tempered with some reality.
Realistic, 100% agree. Sure.
The K5 AIS program, that's about the summer school type situation?
Yeah, so we're looking at different models of, of the best way to, to kind of implement that. But right now, we're looking at a couple of, couple of weeks at a time of some pretty targeted interventions where students would come in for a couple of hours, whether it be a couple of days a week, in order to sharpen their skills in both reading, writing, and math.
Now, why is it people coming?
We haven't even gotten to that stage yet, but we're, that's, that's next.
I have a quick question too. Cheryl, do you want to go ahead? I just had a quick question regarding summer school. So students that did not receive AIS services but now do need extra help, would they qualify to get extra services for the summer?
So right now, we're, we're targeting the AIS, the students that have been designated as needing AIS services by the intervention teams that exist within the building. Obviously, as I just said to Dave, you know, we haven't even reached out to those families yet to see, to gauge their interest. You know, if we do have the ability to expand it to something larger, we, we may look at that. But unfortunately, there, there's a lot going on in the district over the summer. I know there's been some, some question, people have asked, why can't we offer a summer program for everybody? I don't think I can staff that first and foremost. So we're, we're starting with a smaller group and then we'll see what we can expand it to as we look forward.
Thank you, Scott.
Of course.
I wanted to go back, first a comment and then a question. And the comment is going back to what you, one of the, your opening remarks about you wanted to take a more solutions-based approach rather than a problems-based approach and talk about things that we have learned and actually, you know, positive outcomes from this experience. Because I do think, you know, nothing teaches you like a crisis and often you do have some positive things to take with you. And I wanted to mention one specific one because it came up just before in our Education and Technology Committee meeting. We were talking about assessment. So obviously, testing is very different this year, testing of students. And some approaches might be positive changes, right? Some approaches to testing, like moving away from midterms and even final exams and looking at quarterly exams, looking at different ways to assess students. And I think that doing that this year by necessity and then really thinking about the benefits and the pros and cons is a great opportunity. Testing and assessment of students is probably one of the most entrenched practices in education. It's very difficult to change those kinds of practices. So a moment like this actually is a great opportunity. I guess, you know, the question I have, I wanted to ask, what are the roles of the, the humanities and STEM supervisors in some of these steps? For instance, in the teacher collaboration, the vertical alignment, assessment, curriculum development, you know, since these, these positions are still kind of new and this is the board, most of us, we on the board approve these positions. I would love to hear you talk a little bit about the role that these supervisors are taking in some of this important work that you're doing.
They are all of these things. They, they have been instrumental in kind of the. They they have been instrumental in kind of the design of this of this model. They are really truly the ones who are going to be leading this work. You know, they are the the department chairs for the major departments within the district, K 12. So they have been working with teachers all the way through, along the way, within their departments to kind of look at this work and to determine what the next steps are going to be. You know, throughout the the remainder of this year, they'll be meeting with those departments, looking at what's taking place, working with our elementary school teachers and our principals. And then over the summer, they are truly the ones who are going to be running that curriculum development. They will be involved deeply with those meetings. They'll be sitting at the table with teachers in order to support them in the best way possible. They are amazing people in terms of data analysis. They dive right into that data. They've been looking at quarterly grades. They've been looking at report cards. They've been looking at all of the the different pieces that we have in order to kind of help bring it all together as a larger picture in terms of need. So they are, they are going to be instrumental in truly making this, making this happen.
That's, that's great to hear. I have one follow up question about the assessment, the data assessment. I wonder if there has been any thought to considering sort of parental or family feedback as a data point? Because I think that so much education now happening at home and also so much of our students' education and experience laid more bare and more accessible to families because we can see what's happening in Google Classroom. Maybe families are supporting children in new ways based on the access they have to some of the materials that students are learning with. I wonder if there's been any thought about using that as a data point, some family feedback?
Absolutely. And I think that that brings up a great point, that families have been involved in many different ways over the past, you know, year and a half. And to gather that feedback is critical. We kind of wanted to wait till a little closer to the end of the year, just because we've been, I feel like we've been inundating families with surveys and collecting data from them on on different pieces. But I think that's a critical point, not only from the academic lens, but from the social emotional lens as well, to be able to know how are students doing from the family perspective? You know, I think that's, that's a critical piece in addition to the academic piece. And I think it could provide some great data for us in terms of planning and preparation for September, especially for our fully remote students who have not been in the presence of their teachers directly, you know, for for a long period of time.
Well, and also pulling out, what are some of the practices that have come out of this last year or so that are helping families better support students and actually build this partnership that we want between schools and families? So I think that that's great. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Peter.
Scott, I know there's been talk at the state level about not giving regents this year possibly again. And my question is this, some of the literature that I've read suggested it might be good not to give them. But, you know, my statistical and math background like yours says, no, I think we should insist on giving them, as well as the state assessments, because while a lot of people may opt out of state assessments, it's the only thing that you really have going year after year where you could, where you could compare this year's sixth grade to the sixth grade for the last five years and how they do on a test that has been given to sixth graders for a long period of time. Same with the regents. You know, we graduate kids out in in whatever subject. It'd be interesting to see how, in my mind, how the kids do on the same test that they would have had, had we had normal instruction for the last year and compare it to the instruction over the last five years, knowing that every, every class is different, okay? They go up, they go down, they go up, they go down. But to see if there's any significant increase when comparing what's happened over the last year, over the last three to five years. And also among local districts, there might be three districts in Westchester County where everyone nails the the regents and there might be three districts where 50% of the kids failed the regents. And then you could start, and I'm not telling you how to do your job, you know how to do your job, but, you know, then you can start looking at the data and say, well, why were those three districts so good and why were the other three districts so bad? You know what I'm saying? So I think where I'm coming, trying to get to is, I really think we should encourage people to favor the testing this year when they might have not have done so in the past, just so that we could learn more about what's happened over the last year. Does that make sense?
It does. You know, I think, and I may have a slightly biased slant on on this, but I don't think it's too far off than many of my my colleagues. I would agree with you 100% if I thought the tests were valid. And I would also agree with you if I felt that you were comparing apples to apples. So when we look at the three through eight tests, the same with the regents exams, the cut scores change every year.
The what?
The cut scores. So, you know, what, you know, on a regents exam, what it takes to get a 65 changes every single year. And we don't know usually until the test is given, when they norm reference it and do what they need to do. So I think that we are going, we are giving the three through eight assessments. We are going to give the four required regents exams. In reality, it's a parent's choice of whether they want their child to take it or not, and that's fine. I think that if I had a higher perception of the validity and reliability of those tests, I would be 100% with you that having that ability to do that comparison would be great. I'm just not sure that it's actually going to give us the data that we necessarily are looking for. So at that point, my general feeling is if if you want to take the test, please do. We're offering it. It's available to you. If not, I respect that just as much.
I, I, I agree on the, the, what did you say? Not the availability, the accuracy, the validity of the testing. I completely agree with that. But but I'm looking at it as a place where it might be, and I think the teacher input and the parent input and all that stuff is very, very, very important for the individual kids. But I think that we really should encourage people maybe not to opt out. How we do that, I don't know, because it's the only, and I hate to use the word standard because it is a standardized test, but it's the only standard that cuts across all the districts. And, you know, we might learn something that we're not going to learn in those other data points. Just use it as an arrow, not the arrow in the in the quiver, so to speak. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
So I have, I was on mill states when, you know, when we talked about the fact that the regions were curved essentially every year and and even back then, I remember saying that they're, they're really not a great, you know, even when we didn't have a pandemic going on, they're really not a great measurement tool. I'm more concerned about building blocks and and maybe I'm, you know, I imagine I'm probably telling you something we've done anyway. But to me, right, if, you know, I used to joke with my kids about the fact that they they learned pi and everyone says no one uses pi in real life. I happen to use pi many times a year in my career, but the average person who's not doing like encoder tracking of conveyors and engineering type stuff doesn't. So if someone missed out on pi, I calculate that to a thousand digits. I can live with that. On the other hand, and I'm using math examples because they're more natural to me and I think to you also. On the other hand, if someone in, you know, fourth grade can't do their times tables to 12, right? If someone in eighth grade can't do factoring, it has profound effects downstream. When you can't factor, you also will fail in geometry, not fail, but you will have a gap in geometry that will affect you. You have a gap in trig that will affect you. It will have a longstanding impact. I don't know if the same, I'm not an English guy, so I don't know if the same holds true. But if you don't recapture in the Ryan sixth grade, you won't be able to figure out Macbeth in high school. That may may or may not be true, but I'm sure there are similar, you know, vocabulary and grammatical and and literature related material, academic paths, that if you miss out on the building blocks, it has a profound longstanding effect. I also think, I'm sure in a lot of ways, the teachers this year, because of the, because of the nature of the learning, have had to sort of evaluate that and figure out, hey, if I have to have a gap, I'd rather have a gap on pi than on 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 factoring because I know it has a long term effect. But I also wonder if there are documentation or resources as part of the standards or as part of other standards or as part of the general world of knowledge about these kinds of building blocks that we can leverage to make sure that when we're doing our assessments, you know, if someone didn't figure out how to calculate pi to the nth digit, okay, we don't need to, we don't need to send them to summer school to learn that. But if someone missed out factoring, we're going, we're going to lose them. So I'm also not telling you how to do your job. So that's not my intent, but it's just a thought process of, you know, can we look at these resources and try and get our hands to make sure that we can capture the building blocks and make sure that the building blocks are what we're picking up as the priority?
I think you bring up a spectacular point. And I think I want to, I want to make sure that we're all very clear that we are not eliminating any standards. Like the standards are, they, that is, that is a required, that we need to make sure that our students are hitting all of the standards. So we're not eliminating anything. I think where we're beginning to really focus is when I used to spend eight lessons focused on, let's say, the area of a triangle, okay? If I've only spent four and maybe didn't get as deep into it as I normally do, I need to make sure that the next year's teacher has very clearly understood what I've covered in order to make sure that they are able to pick up on that as they're going to the next stop of the of kind of the building block, to make sure that they're able to see that. So I had a conversation today with with one of our sixth grade teachers who said to me, and this is actually a great example, you know, where she was talking about and she brought up that she was going to the next stage of area of a triangle, was taking it to the next stage. And the kids kind of looked at her with this blank stare and she said, I got to back up. Let's make sure that we review this. And after kind of jogging the memory, it was, oh, yep, some, there was a lot of, you know, but she realized that there needs to be more time spent to make sure that that skill, that foundational skill is in place before going to the next stage. So I think those examples are happening even today at a very realistic kind of, you know, kind of pace. So I think those are those critical conversations that are taking place vertically in order to make sure that we have hit all of those blocks and teachers are very, very aware that there are going to be times where kids are not coming to them at the same level as they have in the past. And how do we then back up a little bit, remediate and then move forward? But I think you're, you're right on target with that.
I have one quick remark. I personally have gone back and forth with this standardized testing. Should I have it done for my child? Should I have not? Should I not do it? But, you know, hearing what everyone is saying, I think there's so many valid and fantastic points here. And I think so much, you know, our children are learning from their their classroom teachers and different educators. When there is an issue, I know, you know, for for one thing, they do breakout rooms and they they spend extra time, you know, trying to get each and every student up to the right level of what they're learning. So in this year in particular, I don't think it's the worst thing if a parent, you know, opts out. I understand education is number one and we want our children, all of our children to excel and do well, but I think given under the circumstances, it's okay, you know, if 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 you want to opt out. It's, I think it's to each individual parent and what they decide what to do. But again, I'm always thankful for the educators because they're doing a phenomenal job. And, you know, I feel that they are reaching out to the parents when there is a situation because they want things to settle before something becomes more exacerbated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else as part of the superintendent's report? All right. Thank you guys very much for both of those presentations and all of the questions and answers. All right. Steve, do you want to do four through, I guess through 7.3? You can do four tickets to the end right up until.
Did I? Yep, unmuted. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I did it before I switched the screen back. Okay, I move that we approve the minutes for the March 20, March 23, 2021 meeting. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following health services contracts as listed below. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve budget transfers of $10,000 or more for the month of March 2021 as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with Nicholas Nedwick Consultant for the 2020 to 2021 school year.
Tara, can I get a second? All right. Any questions or comments? And I know I saw you sent one and I'm curious as to the answer myself. I looked at the contract and I couldn't truly figure out exactly what it was for.
Yeah, the question was the consultant, is that a specific scope to support a specific student or a cohort of students? And do we have a scope that's just listed as an hourly rate? Do we have a scope of what that involves? And is it something we could talk about in public? I don't know, maybe there's a. No, I understand that. But in other words, yeah, what's, yeah, is he just?
He's a special education teacher who provides services to students at home. We don't always have enough teachers who are able to work at this.
Okay, so he's an at home instruction. It's not like there's a specific, because it, I forget how categorized them. It didn't just categorize them as a special teacher. It's. Yeah, family training, right?
Applied behavioral analysis and.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That was my, I had that question too, but I just wanted also, I don't think there are minutes attached in number four. We don't have.
Do you want to table that part just until we get them attached or we can just look at them? Because I know that you raised that as well, so.
We were on.